...scheduled meeting of the Ely City Council to order if you get all lines for the question. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everyone to a illustrious, I think Paul is finally in the air. Please, please call the roll. Motion Member Al Foresman?
Here.
Call Cat?
Here.
Roger Bell?
Here.
Ryan Hall?
Here.
Angela Kappa?
Here.
Adam Missy?
Here.
And there are all those. We have a full council to conduct our business this evening. With that, I need an approval of our minutes from September seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Supported by Jerome, supported by Angela. Any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes have been passed. Moving on, we have quite a few additions to our agenda this evening. One of them being the minutes, which we already passed. Can we take them all? Or let me start with this, does anybody have any additional additions or omissions to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, I take a motion for the additions before us. Jerome, A through E?
Yep.
Is there support? Support by Ryan? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Additions have been added to the agenda and we have ourselves on the agenda this evening. Just a couple of things for mayor's report. First and foremost, a quick thank you to Angela, who took my place on Saturday. I had a last-minute scheduling conflict, so she stepped in for me. I asked a few people to fill in, and I'm only one of these. So, thank you for going up to New Valley and welcoming everyone and thanking everyone. That trail, the North Country Trail, is a very, very good deal for Ely. It's a national trail, system hiking trail, and Ozzy is super excited about it. I saw the pictures. Did you want to say just a couple words to Angela?
It was a grand turnout, it was a beautiful day. I am really impressed with all those who have worked very hard on seeing this become a reality. And it's nice to know that this trail is considered, Ely is considered the North Country Trail town. And that's quite a designation. And the nice thing is, is that the hikers can hike through town and shop. They can eat in restaurants and stay in hotels. It's a great tourism opportunity and wonderful luncheon. And I think everyone in the city can be very proud of its designation.
Can you say Angela? Also, I'd like to say a quick thank you to Chief Hood and the Ely Police Department. At the school, we had a little incident on Friday, and their presence were felt at the school. And it was a learning experience for everyone at the school. I've heard a lot of positives, and it was nice to be able to introduce the kindergartners to Chief Hood and to a couple other police officers throughout the day. So, positive and all. And it's nice to know that we have the Ely Police Department and the school in communication. So, all in all, a little bit of a negative, I think, turned into a positive. So, I appreciate communication and the fact that you were there helping out. And all in all, I appreciate that. It is homecoming week in Ely as well, so you'll see a lot of fun things come up. I'm sure we'll be talking, some people will be talking about that later. Lastly, with a little bit of sadness, we lost Ray Marzic this last weekend. I can't even think of the school and the school board without thinking about the chairman, Ray Marzic. I don't remember a time without him out being the chair. I know he wasn't because I think it was, was it Reed? Shmaya? Reed?
She was the manager for a while.
Yeah, for quite a while. I appreciate all that Ray has done for the city, the school district, and how he really steered the school district through a lot of difficult times. He was definitely a big believer in sports. I can't even tell you all the basketball games I saw him at and all the great conversations he had. He gave up his time, he gave up his heart, and he was definitely a big believer in making sure Ely stayed an independent school district. So, I know more details will follow, but he will be sorely missed on the school board. I know that from, just from my whole. So, can we just have a quick moment just to refer to Ray? Our consent agenda. If I could get a motion this evening to waive the entirety, the reading, waive the readings in their entirety about ordinances and resolutions on tonight's agenda? And then to approve rescheduling the November fifth regular council meeting to November twelfth at five thirty due to the general election being on November fifth. Moved by Angela, supported by Ryan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have one request to appear this evening. From Dr. Clark.
Oh, you, Susan?
Yep, it is, it just doesn't sound like it.
It never sounds like it.
I won't put it to me. We can hear you.
I'm Dr. Catherine L. Clark. I live at twenty-one East James Street in Ely. At the September third city council meeting, the council heard the recommendation from the planning and zoning commission to drop the land stability certification requirement at the seventy-five-foot or greater setback in the shoreline overlay district surrounding layers like.
Who comes up with this?
As somebody who has done slope stability studies professionally, I believe I have clued to the stability certification requirement, having made such determinations in the past under another state's regulatory framework. Because I have experience in the subject, I researched Minnesota's regulatory framework for soil and slope stability rules. After the September third meeting, I found that Ely's language in its ordinance, eleven dot forty-one, reflects the language in chapter sixty-one twenty, sections thirty-two hundred through thirty-eight hundred of the Minnesota administration rules. The responsibility for the enforcement of these rules belongs to the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. I hope my concerns today are groundless and that we can all go home chuckling that Katie spotted a tempest in a teapot. However, I'm concerned that Ely may be setting itself to get into trouble with DNR if Ely makes this change without consulting that agency first. My concerns arise apart because of the Silver Rapid zoning fight just on the other side of the county line. As you may recall, last month, DNR requested that Lake County follow its own shoreline ordinances, which it negotiated with DNR in the nineteen-nineties, with DNR, sorry, with DNR stating in writing that it may take Lake County to court if it does not do so. Noting the consequences of ignoring DNR's role in shoreline regulation, I reached out to DNR after reading the agenda for this city council meeting, asking specifically about the respective roles that that agency and local governments have regarding shoreline regulation. DNR's email to me stated, and the first word is paraphrased, quote, "DNR land use unit supervisor Emily Javins provided this summary of how DNR's relationship with local governments work. Simply put, DNR's role is to review and approve local ordinances. Authority is passed from the state level to the local level through this process. They can adopt a model ordinance which we write, or they may adopt a more restrictive standard. It may be that the city attorney, clerk, or planning and zoning administrator have already reached out to the DNR about making this change to Ely forty-one dot forty, eleven dot forty-one, and I can contentedly take my teapot home. However, if DNR's role in shoreline regulation was accidentally overlooked, I would urge the city to reach out to DNR about this change to avoid receiving an unhappy letter from that agency like Lake County did just two weeks ago. Thank you for your time and attention, and now I need to go back to my job. Thanks."
Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you, Katie. You know, you never know where you're going to find the expert in a field that, in their own, and I'm appreciative that you spoke up when you did.
And again, is all this like, who is this person again? Oh yeah, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. After Helen Clark is the legal name. I write books under the name Kat Ho, and I write newspaper articles under the byline Kate Clark. Are you confused yet?
I always remember after. Oh, can I? To my mom? Mike? Hey, you're back here.
What does this leave us and where do we start?
Go ahead.
Well, I think our main concern with this requirement was land stability concerning like Trusona Hills. You know, the land stability was more related to the building site, less so to the, you know, to the shoreline or to the bough line. So, most of the questions we get over time as well, well, what kind of certification do you want us to get? So, you're going to build a house on a lot that's flat, and there's this requirement of stability, and it's always, well, what's the next step? You know, the shoreline, the bough line is one thing, but the actual housing, house site and the stability of that land in particular because it was previously mined area. So, that's kind of what's brought up the question over time. People buy lots and, okay, who do I hire? You know, you could get a geotechnical engineer, you could do soil whorings down, you know, ten feet, twenty feet, two hundred feet, you know, so that's kind of where the question's at. That was it over time. So, yeah, we certainly have got to maybe add a little more as we kind of go through revising and fixing some of these ordinances and figuring out what the best solution is moving forward.
Moving on to committee reports. Harley, huh?
We have a recommendation from Park and Reg. Committee that any maps of green recreational opportunities, including recreational opportunities that are developed be passed to the direct board examination.
Is there support? Support by Jerome? Discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Recommendation from Park and Reg. Committee to task PNC admin to reach out to various organizations to gauge interest and establish availability dates for joint organizational study sessions, discuss ways of upgrading to the rec center's hockey ring into year-round facility use.
Is there support? Support by Angela? Any discussion? Go ahead, Al.
Yeah, this one really concerns me, I guess. I, in most cases where we've got situations where we're trying to improve, you know, our parks or our, like, when you take the bike park and that, or, you know, there was fundraising that was done to do things like this. It seems to me that this is not something that you're going to get the major townships to contribute to in any way. So, I don't know, you know, why this would be a city staff job to do this instead of, you know, someone who is taking this on, there's their own, you know. You look at the wonderful work that the ski, Nordic Ski Club has done with the bike trails and skiing there, and that's kind of like a fine example of how projects like this, you know, come forward, I think.
Yep, what we perceive is interest from various organizations, pickleball club, Blue Line, different folks that have an interest in the hockey ring. And we'd like to reach out to other organizations, be it basketball club, that are also interested in that space because funding, seeking funding for one organization is proving difficult. But if we had several organizations that we could create a multi-use area in that ring, the object is, the objective is to pave it over so that it can be used as pickleball courts in summer, basketball courts, lower hockey, et cetera, and then, of course, the winter uses that it would currently be used for. So, we want to reach out and engage as many organizations as we can individually seek funding channels so that that money can be compiled to fund the project.
Any other questions or concerns or thoughts? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right. Motion passes. Six one.
We have a recommendation from our director to see if ACC students would work in the city of Ely to clean up the area around Pearl Rock while the city is working in the location installing the bench.
Is there support? Support by Jerome? Discussion? Discussion? Jerome?
Would this be considered work study for a student in a college?
I believe so, yes.
Volunteer.
As they've done in the past, if I recall? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to PNC. Angela, say you.
Yes, matter of intervention, PNC approved the following subdivision. Approval of a variance in the subdivision ordinance submitted by the first presbyterian church located at two twenty-six East Harley Street. Parcel, zero three zero 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 one zero zero two nine four zero. Subdivide this property into two parcels. The request is a variance from subdivision ordinance twelve point zero five subdivision five. Each residential lot must be six thousand square feet. Proposal is five thousand square feet. Subdivision ordinance twelve point zero five subdivision five. Lot width minimum is fifty feet. Proposal is for forty feet in width. And variance in ordinance eleven point four one. The side yard setback requires requirements in R two zoning of eight feet. Proposal is for six, six and seven feet. Matter of intervention. Going on, the recommendation from PNC regarding the cannabis land use regulation and ordinance update. See attached cannabis law use regulations. Planning and zoning agrees with the land use and zoning of subdivision two of this proposal. The rest is brought forth by guidelines that were made by the state. Planning and zoning read through it and comments that there is a double standard of shops between each other compared to rules of bars and under events, the hours of nine AM to five PM must, may be unrealistic. Planning and zoning would like to be invited to a study session, public hearing. It's a recommendation.
Okay, is there support? Do you want to say that? There's support for the recommendation, Jerome?
I would support that.
Discussion? Go ahead.
So, it's my understanding here they're looking for support for a study session? They want the council to host a study session in regards to the ordinance?
Yes. Do we have done the agenda and what are we making? Are we supposed to?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
You know, we've been, for our own more important deadlines to come up with ordinance, this seems to be a step in the right direction, and we should continue this discussion if the planning and zoning is interested in sort of helping us do that. I'm all for that, we should schedule for a study session.
December will come up, please.
I see some difference here. Al, go ahead.
I just want to point out that being an ordinance, it would require a public hearing, which would allow all the voices, for and against, to speak on the issue anyway.
Anything else? I think it's also very important to point out, reading anything having to do with cannabis and what is happening with cannabis is that we, as a municipality, do not have a lot of options. With the opposite cannabis, we are pretty much told what to do. So, it may seem like some of the rules don't seem unfair, don't seem fair, but we are pretty much told what to do. We may have a few options, but there's not a lot. Most of the guidelines are brought forth by the opposite cannabis, to be perfectly honest. So, I think that needs to be in the back of everyone's mind as we move forward with this. So, and we're all learning. I think that's the other thing. So, patience as we move forward.
Kelly, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, so we need to draft ordinance with this inclusion. I also would like to get some sense of what the county is going to do because that will greatly affect how the city operates. I mean, we at this point can put in the regular, some regulatory terms, but I think what's going to happen is there's going to be a best practice that comes out through this. This is not in final ordinance form, so perhaps the easiest thing is to schedule so I know when that would be due in terms of putting this into some sort of ordinance form, whether it's the end of October for that study session or however the council sees fit. I'm assuming, I mean, the county is up against the same deadline we are, correct? They are. The number of permits they issue could affect us because there is a provision relative to permits within a county based on population. So, I am quite interested to see what County Attorney Maggie has to say about it.
Paul?
That doesn't relieve us of the obligation to create this ordinance, though. We still need to do our own.
We do have to do our own, correct? But it could affect licensing, the way the licensing actually occurs.
That comes out to the proposal on page twenty-two, the key takeaways. And number four, all cannabis-related businesses other than retail will only be allowed in industrial zones. Is that a recommendation from planning and zoning or some other source?
I believe that's planning and zoning's recommendation.
I haven't agreed with that. Effectively, you know, we're noticing in the public that commercial growing activities will only be allowed in industrial zones.
In talking, in talking with Scott about, you know, planning and zoning's discussions, I understood that as it currently sits, the products that are currently available on the market, that those would continue in the capacity that they are. The question is just the expansion of products and whether or not there will be licenses available in the city of Ely proper, or whether the county will be adopted into those county number of licenses permitted. So, yes, we will do our own ordinance, but I just want to be clear on the licensing issue that is up for interpretation.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, it's one of those things, most of our focus has been on the retail side of this thing, but if there are interested, and there have been people expressing interest in growing operations, we don't have, we haven't had any discussion about that other than perhaps limiting the industrial zones licensing. And even whether we launch it or any of that, we have yet to discuss. So, we really should have a study session of some sort. But I think a public hearing will be required after we decide what we think is appropriate to get public feedback based on that.
Go ahead.
Currently, we do have a study session scheduled for October. It's to discuss the schedule, fines and those types of things. So, I think we would have capacity in October to include this as a topic of discussion. I think concerning the public hearing, every meeting is a whole public meeting, so we can just put out there if you're interested in listening to, you know, the path it may take, how much it's taking public comment at that time. It's just starting to formulate the ordinance, and then people will have the opportunity to speak on the specifics of the ordinance. So, I think here in October would be a good time to have that happen. And then we have all of November and December, which sounds like a long time, but it's only four meetings to get that one in place.
So, I believe that we include this in the study session in the middle of October.
In the middle of something?
First, yeah, a recommendation.
All those in favor? All those in favor? Opposed? All right, Paul?
No, I believe that we include this in the study session in the middle of October.
All those in favor for hanging out some more? Or any support for that, I'm sorry. October, study session. We're going to add on. Support that, Jerome? Any further discussion? I think it's very important that everybody understands, I'm not going to, I need to stress this again and again, that these, we are the passer through on a lot of these. We hear from the county and the state, and we are just the people that are here to say this is what is happening. If I remember correctly, I'm not even sure how much our police department enforces or licenses in some cases. It's, we're just, I'm not, we just write all things. I mean, it's going to be very awkward, and we are all learning, and the learning curve on this is very sharp, as we are all finding out it's going to be sharp and steep. So, patience is what we need because this is not my area of expertise, and I'm sure most of us are. So, this is licensing, they pass off the licensing, the application, and we are just here to go. Okay, I don't have more recommendations. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Go ahead.
Recommendation from PNC to approve the updated dumpster enclosure ordinance. You can see the attached chapter ten, the city code, and to have the city attorney work on updating the ordinance.
Is there support for that? Support by Adam? Discussion? Go ahead.
So, as I was reading through this, I saw that there's a grand product clause in here, and we wouldn't require everybody to follow this ordinance? It seems like, I'm not sure how that works on the legal side of things. That can alter the ordinance for this one. Grand product clause.
Sorry, I'm not following the question. In this particular section?
Yeah.
Kate, are you on Adam?
I'm on three.
I'm on twenty-three, I don't see Brad Hall. Just wanted to get it.
And it's twenty-three.
Yep, I'm on twenty-three.
I remember seeing it too.
Okay, help me, please, somebody help me.
Sorry, I should have underlined it. Let's say when we do find it.
Okay.
Does it apply to ordinance of this nature?
Well, let's find the language, and then I'll give you the answer.
Gotcha, okay.
Let's say when we do find it.
Okay.
Does it apply to ordinance of this nature?
Well, let's find the language, and then I'll give you an answer.
Gotcha, okay.
So I can take a closer look at it, but grandfathering in is not something that's generally written in. So it's just, it's peculiar to me. So let's see what the actual language that we're looking at is, and then we can hope for that.
What do we want to do here?
Mayor, may I ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
Separate question, everybody. What changes were made for this? I see one line struck on page 23. What else was changed to this? The subdivision 10 is on the head, is that correct? Specifying the location and construction of dumpster enclosure. The ordinance did detail on what was required. What we can do, we can bounce this back and review it.
It'd be good if the impacted businesses somehow were noticed as to what requirements would be so they can provide, input if they want to.
What do we want to do here?
No, Mayor, we refer this back to planning zoning for more discussion. But I'm not sure what I want them to discuss. But I'm moving on anyway.
Al, we have a motion on the table right now. I'm discussing right now. We are, yeah.
Right. If I recall, the motion is to send us the journey for writing as a final ordinance. But my concern with this is, you know, considering the small lot size of many of our businesses, you know, it's even feasible in most places. But I mean, you know, we have a number of businesses that use up almost entirely their lot with their building. So how do we address that? You know, when we just fall out like this and not having any room for variance, I'm struggling if this is realistic, so.
Grandfather doesn't need to see the limits outside the asshole.
No, I don't see the.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Got it. Feel better.
So my motion is to send this back to PNC.
We have a motion, we have a second. All right. Motion and second.
To send it to Kelly.
Yes, to send it to Kelly. All right, as written. All right. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, I.
Division of the House.
Division of the House?
Yeah.
All right. We're going to go back to, yeah, go back.
Okay.
All right, moving on. Go back. All right, next up. Police Commission. All right, U C.
That's me. We have a recommendation from the U C to approve advertising for the Salvation Army Heat Chair Program on the city of Ely website.
Is there support for, support by Angela, discussion?
Yeah.
Please.
So I'd like to point out, a lot of people like to talk about cold weather rule, and they like to, I know a lot of people hit hard times as winter comes, and it's very expensive to heat homes in our community. I want to remind people, look at this Salvation Army Heat Chair Program. If you think you might have trouble over the winter, please apply now while funds are available. You know, you come February, March, when things really get tight, a lot of times that money's already gone, and your chances of getting it are not there. And it's also a good time to remind people that being a utility, the, if you cannot make your payment, you need to work with the utility to set up a payment plan that is, works for both of you. And you have to stick to it. You can't just ignore it, because they can shut you off if you fail to come up with a working plan with them. So please, plan ahead, know your situation. If you think there's a possibility you may need the heat chair, please apply now.
One minute, Charlie.
Just to build on, down at San, we also sent out a cold weather rule to every resident in Ely. Don't throw it away. If you plan on utilizing it, you do have to have a payment agreement and then arrange it with the utility. So because it turns cold, you can't assume that by doing nothing, you'll be protected under the cold weather rule, because that is not true. And again, as Al, just to reiterate, those programs with the heat chair, with AUA, those programs are first come, first served, that are, you know, that apply and are eligible. What we find is a lot of folks get around springtime, they have it applied, they go to apply, all the money's gone. Then you've got a huge bill, and they get disconnected. So that's our focus, people see this and apply and continue applying. Because certainly the last thing we want to do is turn anybody's utilities off. Any type of year, especially winter, so.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We have a recommendation from the U C to approve attendance for the MMU A Tech Bill and Operations Conference and Trade Show in St. Cloud, December 10th through the 12th, 2024. That's a motion.
Is there support? Support by Jerome? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We have a recommendation from the U C to approve $400 in residential CIP rebate for a heat pump at 919 East Chapman Street. That's a motion.
Is there support? Support by Ryan? Any discussion? Commercial break? Yeah.
I'll have to.
Oh, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We have a recommendation from the U C to approve $5,109.31 commercial CIP rebate for light, if you can do its true value. That's motion.
Is there support? Support by Angela? Any discussion?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'd like to point out that these residential CIP rebates for both residential and commercial customers are available to all the residents on the U C for like both improvements, conservation efforts. And, you know, a simple call to the clerk's office or the utility office will get things started and will get you pointed in the right direction. It benefits us all, and when you buy energy-efficient appliances, you save money in the long run. These rebates help cover the difference in the cost of those appliances, and it helps us from having to upsize the size of our distribution system here. So please consider looking into these rebates when anytime you're looking at replacing mobile equipment.
Q. Al, commercial.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Commercial and residential, it's a big deal. All right, moving on. Do we have any other community reports? All right, moving on. Departmental report.
Hi, new packet is an addition. We have a development agreement, which we've been working on for some time with Pillar Company LLC. This is the owner of the old U C center located at 30 South First Avenue East. Mr. Matt Stupnick, who you're all aware of, and he knows his plans to convert the building into a boutique hotel. We did make application, the IRRR, for commercial demolition money. That was by resolution by the city council here probably a couple of months ago. At the same time, we're applying for the depot, depot project. Matt is completing his plans. That application is currently being scored for the demolition portion. What this development agreement means is for the $200,000 that we are hopefully going to be awarded from IRRR for this project, in exchange for that funding, he needs to complete this project. He has a timeline included in here, October 1st, 2026, for his actual tax credit. It actually is the end of December 2025. So he's got a little bit over a year to get that project to a substantial completion basis. How this would work is if the project stalled out, failed, and the IRRR comes in and says they want their money back, this is the method that we get the money back, the IRRR. So it's not so much if we get the money, it's that the IRRR has a kind of a pullback provision if a project stalls out. Matt is very aware of that. In his due diligence in his project, you know, he's doing it gradually and looking at, you know, the structural engineer aspect of his plan with the approved architectural plans he has with Park Service. So with this money, the project will, in essence, start here probably around the 1st of December. He does have a contract, he's working on with a general contractor that then would be working with us on putting this demolition work out to bits. In essence, it would be City of Ely project, demolition portion, just like down at the depot. So much like we've done for other businesses, hardware store, demolition of the old rock shop, you know, I can go on and on of the projects that we have filled the same role. And more and more often, we're, we're doing development agreements so that we have that piece, so it's understood what's going on and what the expectation is. So also included in here is the piece with parking at the Conan Street, the old Ford garage. We're still working toward that project as well. And the intent would be when that is available for parking, he would then lease it. That would be, you know, terms will negotiate later, depending on if we get some grant funds, how that project will be scored. So obviously, for construction, he doesn't need a parking lot, so that'll be something happening, kind of simultaneously to his project development. So why the time is up, the essence on this is they're scoring these applications now. So IRRR will be having a meeting soon. This program does not go through the board, but this does need the approval of the commissioner. And the funds within the commercial demolition program are limited. With this award, we'll have over 40% of the funds in that program for this fiscal year for the IRRR. So that's why it's on your agenda tonight for your consideration.
Need a motion? By Al, supered by Ryan. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anything else, Charlie? Thank you. Archie.
Good evening. Since the last time they met on the 17th, Ely Fire Department responded to 15 medical calls and three fires, including a half acre wildland fire today just used to the college that we responded to before service. We have great attendance at the Public Safety Open House, so thanks to those that came to that event. But I can't remember last time we met. I had mentioned we had also attended Truck Night on the 12th of September. So one of the best nights of the year in my estimation. Coming up, we will be part of the coming parade on Friday. And then also, we've got some members helping out, sort of included the J. Gordon Burnout Competitions this weekend, and also just kind of being on standby in case there's a need for fire resources at that time. I think that's all I have to report. Unless you have any questions.
Any questions? All right, thank you. My part is over, Charlie.
Well, you can see in your packet, as promised at the last meeting, there is a lot of information about conferences that we attended in September. I would be happy to answer any questions. My part of it, if it's a session I didn't attend, you may need to ask Jesse or Tricia if you need clarification on their notes, because we do split up the sessions and try not to attend so we can share as many ideas as we can. We did come back with a lot of things that we want to implement for programming for the two of them, since they went to programming things, and a lot of things that I won't talk to the board about on my side, because I went to more administrative sorts of things for myself. You guys have any questions? I'll leave them on how many trees I killed, so if you guys have any.
After a minute, I haggled a little, but I saw 150 of them. I remember. It was, I talked with Rachel about the conference, and it was really interesting to hear all the different, just the little tidbits. And the Dr. Seuss Museum, I really liked to watch that.
Yes, one of the nice things was that the conference, we had arranged for the library, people attending there to have free access to the museum in Springfield, Massachusetts. And so we got to the Dr. Seuss Museum, which was really pretty cool. And it was very beautiful, all the sculptures are very massive, big bronze sculptures. So if you take a look at the library today, so we can share some of those photos on there that we took over there. If you don't have, go for it.
I just got to say that I love this topic for your Friday morning keynote speaker, burnout and the secret to unlocking the stress cycle, because I do feel that burnouts do it all. Did I say that wrong?
That sort of burnout was not explicitly mentioned, but it could probably fit in with what she was talking about, so.
Clever.
It was actually one of the sessions that, well, it was a keynote speaker, but it was actually one of the things that I got the most out of first time, so. If you don't have any more conference-related questions, moving on to what's happening at the library. So it's a new month, so we have some new crafts. Our new take and make craft is a spider web craft for Halloween. The spice of the month is Anis. If you've been out on the Trazana, you might have noticed that we have a new story, Cheryl, out there. It's Hush Hush Forest by Mary Casanova. Coming up in terms of programming, starting tomorrow at 3:00 P.M. and running through the, October 7th, we will be having a rolled doll caboose. That's trivia content on the works of rolled dolls, specifically the Twix, Matilda, and the BFG. So if you're interested in participating in that, let us know so we can get your email on the list. On Thursday this week at 4:00 P.M., we will be having a jigsaw puzzle swap. So if you've got jigsaw puzzles in your home that you want to exchange, not leave, exchange for other jigsaw puzzles that people bring in, please come in. There's, the last one we had was during the torrential downpour in June, so we had lots of disappointed people afterwards that they did not make it in through all that rain. And those who showed up were disappointed that people didn't come in to trade with them. So hopefully we'll get a nice turnout. Next weekend, on Saturday, October 12th, we will be having our, one of our special events, our Wild Wild West Mystery, Murder Street. If you want to participate in that, you should sign up by the end of the business day on October 7th. That's Monday next week, so that we can write you a role for the mystery. And it should be a lot of fun. So I encourage anyone who is interested in trying to solve a mystery themselves or wanting to play cowboy for an afternoon, to sign in and be a part. And then on Monday, the 14th, at 12:30 PM, we'll be having a legacy program talking about WPA, Works Progress Act Art History in Minnesota. So that should be great. And also on Monday, the 14th, at 3:00 PM, the Friends of the Library will be having their monthly book club discussion. And this month, they are discussing The Night Watchmen by Louise Friederich. So that's what I got.
Any questions for Rachel? Thank you. Please, Jean.
Good evening. Couple things, I guess I'll start with the fun stuff. Homecoming Parade is gonna be on Friday at 1:00 PM. It sounds like they're gonna be lining up on 7th Avenue, going down 7th to Sheridan, 4th Avenue, and 4th to Harvey, back to the school, and the loops around the school, and then by the baseball field. So if you guys are out of it, I'd kind of suggest you check it out. Shortly after that, I did get contacted from a car enthusiast that's gonna be bringing in, Al, how would you describe his cars?
Good. So the G-Force Rally will bring about 15 exotic cars into town. Things like McLarens and Ethelons and things like that.
Things we all wish we could drive, I guess. Fancy cars. But they're gonna be at the Grand Eagle Lodge earlier in the day. You wanna go look at their vehicles, and then they're gonna, they're gonna have an escort through town. They requested, kind of way to, I think they're going to Thunder Bay after us. So a couple different parade and procession, so interesting. And then if you like cars even more, the following day, we have the Jake Forsman Memorial Car Show and Burnout Competition, right open from City Hall here. There'll be some roads that will be affected for this, mainly in Chapman Street from 2nd Avenue to 4th Avenue, and 3rd Avenue, I believe from Sheridan to Harvey. Is there any other roads that?
No, we, the area in front of the Fire Hall and that will be limited access, but it won't be closed. So it will be difficult to pass through, because we have registration coming through there and then the Fire Hall and that.
So the city will probably, we put out some signs, no parking overnight along that route, just so you're aware. Come, come enjoy the event, it's always a really interesting time to do some burnouts legally in town. Yeah, and now the not so fun stuff. We had a sudden and disappointing officer resignation last Friday. Officer Christopher Bye made a sudden decision that he no longer would like to work for the police department or in law enforcement. So I'd ask that you guys accept his resignation and...
I need a motion to accept Jerome to accept his resignation. Jerome and Adam, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And then I would ask that we begin starting to find his replacement.
Motion to accept, to certainly put his replacement, moved by Jerome, supported by Al. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That's all I got. Anyone have any questions?
Do you have a question?
Did he get a brand new canoe?
He did, yep. Everyone at our department, with the exception of myself, received a canoe as part of the hiring and retention program. So the fact that he left, he's leaving within the three years, he will have to pay that portion back on his $38 million value.
Anything else? All right. Enjoy all your parades.
Sidney Turden. Hey, we have three note and mortgage for you. The first one is commercial renovation loan for Dexter Incorporated VBA. Can you want in $12,000 for a re-borrow?
I need a motion. Moved by Ryan, supported by Adam. Any discussion? Discussion seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to dismiss.
Second item is a note and mortgage for residential rehab loan for Kelsey Boncic for $10,000 for 940 East Chapman Street.
Need a motion, moved by Jerome, supported by Angela. Any discussion? Discussion seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to dismiss.
And the third, a note and mortgage for residential rehab for Dan Carlson for 1304 East Harvey for cocaine from this sewer.
Need a motion, moved by Jerome, supported by Ryan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to dismiss.
And then the fourth item is the first green ordinance, 378, relative to Chapter 11, Section 11.41. This was the, that Dr. Catherine, Helen Clark, Katie Clark, had updated us on earlier today. I do suggest that you move this forward. We'll do the necessary checks. Although I tend to agree with Harold as to the nature, the intent of the nature of the concern, but we will ensure that we follow through with the DNR. But it's easiest to think if the council first approves it, we'll take this to the DNR as we intend to do a second reading. And before we put it on your agenda, we'll make sure to clarify this item.
I need a motion. So we can make changes between the first and second reading, just so everybody's word is totally legit. So moved by Al. Right. Supported by Adam. Any discussion?
I am.
Yes, go ahead, Angela.
Um, is there a name on? I mean, what am I looking at? This ordinance, this property?
Um, the Spalding, essentially the Spalding area. We do, we can show you from, yeah. Basically, the area surrounding Miners Lake. But it's not meant to be like a shoreline issue. It's actually meant to be a stability issue of the buildings. But I think it's clarification, and we can follow through.
Do you post that, or do you put that in the papers so our public can know what?
Well, it is a zoning change, so irrespective, before the second and final reading, there will be a public hearing. With every ordinance change, we have to have a public hearing, we have to post it. We do that with everyone.
But when you post it, do you post the information so the public sees it before they come to the public hearing?
Yes, there's always a public notice posted 10 days in advance.
And it gives a, a plot, plan, and description?
For a zoning ordinance like this, you would give the description of the zoning, the particular code which we wish to change. Because it's actually, you're changing the main zoning section for the C of D.
Great, any other discussion? Can you see? Councilmember Al Forston?
Yes.
Podcast?
Yes.
Jerome Devault?
Yes.
Brad Kelly?
Yes.
Angela Campbell?
Yes.
And Izzy?
Yes.
And Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
More to come on that, more to come. Great, moving on. We do have correspondence from St. Louis County about, on October 28th at 6:00 PM in council chambers. There is a public information meeting about our 2025 Harvey Street project. Harold, what do you need to tell us about?
I'd also like to note that you may see there's survey markers, stakes in those yards, and those are for the temporary construction easements. In most cases, some of that does impact city owned land. The parking lot at 1st Avenue, Harvey Street is city owned, so there are some parks there. As it states in this flyer, will be complete reconstruction from Central to 9th Avenue East with significant rock removal in the area of 3rd Avenue East to Central Avenue. So this is where we discussed quite a bit. You've seen in projects committee minutes where we're hoping to re-line the storm sewer. So no longer cuts down 3rd Avenue, it's down Patterson Street and White Street. It just cuts all the way over to down Harvey Street to Central. So it'll be a big project. As you, as you drive knowing, you see that it is falling apart, so it is great to finally see. We've been working with the county for many years on this. High construction costs have pushed these projects back year after year after year. So originally intended was to do reconstruction all the way through to Highway 1. That's probably gonna have to be a couple phases of the project with this one next year, and it might be a couple of years between phase projects, so. If you're all interested, you know, come in. It'll be here at City Hall. There'll be maps, drawings, everything you need to know about the project, so.
I think it's important to maybe put in people's heads that this is Harvey Street, and it begins on May 2025, October 25th. It's close to traffic, original parking. Is that, do we need to kind of start thinking about that? Is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah?
Yep, to reconstruct, we got...
Right, okay. I'm gonna, I'll let you go, and then I'm gonna...
I just wanna bring the obvious question, and the 4th of July parade road will have to be rewrote, assuming this year. Okay, sounds good.
Don't say that out loud. Go ahead, Al.
Two things. This is a one-year project to do the whole thing.
Yes, just like James, same distance as James, so.
September, October. Six months.
One calendar year. And the impact of the school is, is the power that you handle, that kind of...
There'll be phasing in the project, so that is part of the discussion at this meeting tomorrow, is how the project's phasing, so. All unfortunate thing of this project, very little utility work. And actually, that end of the project has very little storm sewer work even, so. When you look at 4th to 8th, that lawyerage just has a few catch bases, nothing, nothing too major. So most of those avenues will already be open, except for the time when the, you know, the work done at that particular intersection, so. So that's why over the years, we reconstructed 4th Avenue, 8th Avenue, 5th, 6th, you know, all of those are up to, up to standard and been fixed up, so.
Please, Jean.
I didn't have anything else. About the school?
Well, I was just, yeah, I was just, you raised your hand.
Oh, I was just talking about the parade. I'll work with the school about, working with better drop offs while the construction's going on, whether it's utilizing the old drop off and high school utilizing the other side. We'll make it work.
And it talks about decorative lighting, it's a smooth decorative lighting, it's going to be. Down there, it's always. Want to say? All right, moving on. Correspondence from the Ely Chamber of Commerce, preparing the Harvest Moon Festival. Thank you all. City, for all your help and hard work. Habitat for Hum- Habitat for Humanity, their highlights. And then correspondence for the Ely Area Ambulance Service. Go ahead, Harold.
Just concerning ID on communications. I did speak to Scott Kellerman concerning the request for also the CAS. Do you consider that it's the city designated on the not off man ambulance board? And that sounded like he would bring that board. They did have a meeting to fill the vacated, vacated position by Chuck, and we filled that, but there's still lots of open positions, so, you know, there's some semantics there of how who is gonna be much designated. But I think, I think it was, it was great to talk with Scott, to see where they're at, what's going on. Obviously, we have the proposed project coming with the construction of another project on their location, remodel of their building, so there's still a lot of work to be done. I said how important, but relay how important it would be to the council for Council of Cassidy person on that board. So I didn't get any pushback, and thought it was a great idea, so. Anyway, that all transpired real quickly that week from a resignation on Monday to the council meeting on Tuesday, and their special meeting on Thursday to add a City of Ely resident to that board, so. Anyway, we'll keep you in the loop as that transpires.
Thank you for your communication and working, working on that kind of back here. All right, moving on. Claims for payment. Take a motion, one or all? Jerome?
I'll make the motion, please. A, B, C, D, and E, and claim your payment.
There's support, supported by Ryan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No questions. Old business. All right, we have some seats. We have one applicant, or two applicants, or two boards. How do we get around?
Yes, I'd like to accept Claudia Zappucci to join the tree board. She's been a regular member of the board meetings now for at least two years, and she is a wonderful provider of information. A member of America. So motion.
There's support, supported by Jerome. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to dismiss. So with that taken, it looks like our 2024 is ending soon, people get a lot of pride, are all open to any seats. We have one opening seat left for a tree board, and then we have two seats for heritage preservation, which are available. All resident or non-resident seats. Come have some fun, maybe use the hall. Lack of minutes sometimes. But we do serious business. All right, on your new business. Resolution 2024 dash 36, resolution making assessments against taxable properties for building, water, sewer, and electric accounts. And there is an updated exhibit date, just so everybody's aware. I need a motion. Moved by Angela, supported by Ryan. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. Councilmember Al Forston?
Yes.
Podcast?
Yes.
Jerome Devault?
Yes.
Brad Kelly?
Yes.
Angela Campbell?
Yes.
And Izzy?
Yes.
And Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
Resolution passed, as you know, I'm pleased. And Resolution 2024 dash 37, resolution supporting the US EPA Brownsville Assessment Grant Application to be submitted by the City of Virginia and authorizing the City of Ely to enter into an MOU of agreement. The City of Virginia got a, got a community-wide asses- assessment? Project?
Four.
Four. I'm not sure that's...
It'd be four.
Well, I'm like, wait, is, hang on, let me not let it be. I'm gonna say there is, okay. And then agreement for, for a community-wide assessment, I got it. All right, I need a motion.
Move over to Brownsville.
Moved by Ryan, supported by?
I'll support that.
Um, Adam, thank you. I'm still on the whole guy there, sorry. Disconnected. Any discussion? Go ahead, Paul.
Harold, can you have a little chance of this here?
We're hoping so. We were passed over the last round by the ARDC. What's interesting is they didn't spend all their money. So we're a little concerned that funding that was awarded to Northeast Minnesota that went on to spend may not help applicants by our coalition. So we did have a meeting with the ARDC, kind of voicing our concern, disappointment in how that last transpired. But we feel we've got a really good application. The projects that were proposed, the last rounds, we were awarded. Projects all moved forward, the money was spent as intended, and redevelopment projects occurred. What's unfortunate is not having got it from the last round last time, the EPO project that, of course, we're deeply into construction with Mr. Ott, his investment. We weren't able to get money to fund that, so now all of that work is being funded by the property owners. So that's where it's important. I believe we got 11 communities that are still in this coalition with a backbone of projects. So Virginia, again, has graciously agreed to be the fiscal agent, which comes with a lot of work, of course, the federal funds. And then both City of Amelit and City of Ely were co-chairs with Jack, Judith, Monahan, the city administrator for Amelit, and then myself. We kind of share those duties, and our consultant, NTS, who we've worked with for many years in these projects, does the lion's share of the work, so. At this point, we're just signing on, making an application. Hopefully, things... Hopefully, things move forward. And if we're not successful, we're just gonna keep applying, so.
Any, any other discussion? Any comments, concerns? Moving on, Casey, call her, please. Councilmember Al Forstman?
Yes.
Podcast?
Yes.
Jerome Belts?
Yes.
Ryan Kelly?
Angela Campbell?
Yes.
Anna Disney?
Yes.
And Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
Resolution passes, you know, absolutely. And we have one person for open for...
I'm February the last Friday, eleven thirty west Shagalo Road. And I'm talking tonight real quickly. I do not like to see, and I know others don't like to see, last minute additions made to the agenda that are posted less than an hour before the meeting tonight. Just in general, this has been going on for quite a while. Sometimes meetings, additions are posted after your meeting. But an hour before with somebody tonight doesn't allow us to give time as citizens to read what's in there, much less for the council members to read and ask questions. Sometimes in the past, you've had minutes posted from different commission meetings that weren't even reviewed by the individual members. And those weren't urgent, immediate things. My understanding is the agenda and additions should be, if possible, posted three days before business. And that isn't happening. And so what I'd like you to do is to see if you can help City Hall try and get those things posted at least an hour, well, an hour, by noon at least, if not sooner, so that we can see additions. Thank you.
Any other? All is fine. All right, with that, we are adjourned.